We're calling the meeting to order.
It's being 6:30. Ms. Gunter and Mr. Janiver had told me they were not going to be here today, so we luckily have a quorum with just three. The bills of manifests are going around. First thing I want to start off with is our audit presentation. So, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Oh, Cheryl Burke from Melton Heath.
Thank you. Do you want to sit down, or would you rather stand?
Um, whatever.
It's up to you. We've got some space here, or you can use the microphone.
The mic's right at the end of the table.
Oh, you should have a microphone.
Here, the pages this way.
Sure.
Do you all have a copy?
Yes, we do.
Well, thank you very much for having me here tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to Marjorie and staff. The audit went very well. I also wanted to make note and commend the district for establishing an audit committee this year that really is a great mechanism to serve as a liaison between management, the boards, and the audit team. And so, I had the pleasure of meeting with that audit committee a few weeks ago to review the drafts, these reports before they were finalized, answer their questions, and also talk about some recommendations. So, I just wanted to make note of that, since it's something that's new and different this year. You all have the audited financial statements, and I'm going to just point out some of the highlights, and if you have questions, let me know.
Just the stapled sheets, Karen.
Uh, yep. That was it. So, the first highlight of the financial statement is the opinion on the financial statement. That's what you're hiring us for, and that's on page two of the financial statements. It's about in the middle of the page, a little bit towards the top. And so, one of the points of interest of an audit report is whether it's a clean or unmodified audit opinion, and it is. It says that "We believe these financial statements are materially fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles." The next few pages after that are the M-DNA section, or the Management's Discussion and Analysis section, and it's really just an overview of the financials. The numbers page begins on page 10 with a statement of net position. And there's a couple of different presentations of the numbers in governmental audited financial statements. This is the first presentation. And when I met with the audit committee, I actually didn't start with this page in the financial statements, because this is a very alarming-looking page. And it is that way, because this is a presentation that is a full accrual basis, and what that means is it puts all the long-term assets and liabilities on this page. It summarizes everything into one column, the general fund, the reserves, the food service fund, and then it starts adding on all of these liabilities. So, a couple of years ago, I may have mentioned GASB 68. That's the unfunded liability related to the New Hampshire retirement system. And the GASB, or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, pronouncement requires that your proportionate share of that liability be recorded on this page of the financial statements. And that number is, towards the bottom of the page, it's $4,407,833. And what that does is it drives your equity under this method of accounting way down. Actually, looking at your equity in total, your total net position on page 10 is net positive. Many governmental entities, school districts, towns, counties, and so forth, are in a negative position overall on this page of the financial statements because of the implementation of 68. Something that, you know, comes up quite frequently. People get alarmed, and they think that they have to budget, or they have to fund that. That's not the case. And this is not a new liability. It's been out there. It's just the new reporting standards are now recording, requiring it to be included on this page of the financial statements. Another factor that's driving this number now down is the net OPEB obligation. It's the number right above that, 219,596. What that represents is the unfunded liability related to allowing retirees to participate in your health insurance programs. And even though they pay 100%, there's still an addition, there's an increase in cost because of their age and allowing them to participate in the district's plans. That number from the financial statements comes from the valuation report that, or the actuary that you hired to calculate that. That number's going to be worse next year. There's a new GASB out there that's going to be required to be implemented in order to get a clean audit opinion. It's GASB 75. Right now, the liability that you're looking at is only a piece, an incremental piece of the liability that's out there. Next year, everybody's going to be required to put the full amount on the books, and that's going to drive this net position down quite a bit more.
Would you mind taking a step back and just explaining with the, I mean, I know you've done this in the past years, but the net pension liability. What does that represent?
What it represents, so your employees participate in the New Hampshire retirement system, and as a result of that, there are expected benefits that are going to be paid to them. The New Hampshire retirement system has an actuary that calculates what those expected benefits are in the future are going to be, and it calculates rates of return on their current investments that they have. The difference between basically what they have in the bank and what they're going to pay out is an unfunded liability. And every, if you look on their website, you can see their report, and every governmental entity that participates in the New Hampshire retirement system has a piece of that unfunded liability. It's based on a very complicated calculation. So, it's really your piece of the pie of that promise to pay benefits in the future.
So, at the state level, there's a pension fund?
There is, yes.
That everybody pays into, then there's the promise of benefits on the other side of that.
Correct.
And they take that difference, and then they take the difference and spread it across all the areas.
Exactly. Yep, you got it, right.
So, would we have to pay that at some point when it comes down to it? Or, we don't know.
You really don't know, and again, this is the, it's calculated by an actuary. There's a lot of moving parts to it. There's a lot of assumptions, rates of return, life expectancies, increases, and so forth. So, it's really a moving target. It's just out there, and really, there's really not a good answer for that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Sure. The next page, on page 11, this relates to the statement of net position. It's a very summarized income statement titled "The Statement of Activities." And again, to remind everybody that this method of accounting is quite a bit different than what you use to manage the district's finances because of those long-term items. So, you'll see that there's depreciation expense. This is one of the examples of the differences in accounting. So, for instance, when you decide to budget for purchases of capital equipment, you expense those in the year of the purchase. For this method of accounting, they don't do that. They put it on the balance sheet and recognize the expense over time. Same is true with the changes in the net pension liability and the changes in the net OPEB obligation. So, a little bit of background. And these two pages in the financial statements are primarily used by the bond rating agencies. So, if you were going to go out for a capital project, they'd be some focus on these pages. On page 12, and this is when I met with the audit committee, this is the page they actually started with, because this is what they call the fund basis. There's no long-term assets or liabilities. It's very consistent with the way that the district creates and manages its budget. You'll see that there's two columns here. That's the required presentation. One is titled "General Fund." That general fund column also includes your reserve funds. That's a requirement of the reporting standards. One of the focus areas of the balance sheet for management and users of the financial statements is the fund balance section, and that's down the bottom of the page. And so, that's the equity section. You'll see four different categories of fund balance. And what the audit committee, when we met, have found very helpful was one of the footnote disclosures that breaks that down further. So, I am going to jump to that page, and that's in the footnotes, and it tells you exactly what is included in fund balance, and that's on page 27. And there's different categories. So, for instance, there are certain fund balance categories. If you have prepaid expenses or inventories, those are resources that have really already been expended and not going to generate future cash flows. So, that kind of, that's why it's titled "Nonspendable." In the committed on page 27, in the middle, you can see all of your various reserve funds. And those are basically what you've put away as a result of the budget. And then the assigned category. The assigned category is two line items. Voted transfers to the reserve funds, and that relates to your 2018 budget, and then your 2.5% retention that is allowed by the state of New Hampshire. That's the $211,000. The remaining fund balance is the unassigned fund balance in the general fund of $49,652. So, this gives a really nice breakdown and understanding of the fund balance categories. And actually, the page prior to this, 26, gives you definitions of those various fund balance categories. So, going back to page 12, looking at the balance sheet, I did want to point out that that unassigned fund balance in the general fund of $49,652, it decreased quite a bit last year, and that's because you used fund balance to balance your budget, or to reduce the amount of the assessments that you budgeted. And that's actually, the $49,000 that you're looking at is a pretty low figure. It's very difficult in New Hampshire for school districts to build a surplus. As you know, that any surplus that's recorded in the unassigned fund balance is technically supposed to be used to offset the next year's budgeted assessments. But for management purposes, this is about 0.4% of your budget, and that's pretty low. Typically, what is considered, and there's all sorts of, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, state of New Hampshire, they don't really have specific guidelines for school districts, but there are some recommendations. And typically, you'd probably want to see 2%, 3% to 5% kind of, because you need that for operating purpose, for cash flow purposes. So, that's a little bit low, so something to think about.
So, that's outside the reserve amount?
It's outside. It's kind of, that's what you can use in the next year's budget to offset. And just to make note, in the previous year, the number, if you flip a couple more pages, the income statement, actually, I'm jumping around a lot, but if you looked at page 16, that's the budget versus the actual page, and you can see in the middle of the page, the other financing sources, the use of fund balance. See, that's 695, 691. That's what you used in fiscal year 2017 of that, the prior year's unassigned fund balance to reduce your assessments in '17. So, that was a rather big number. So, you've got some fluctuations going on with your unassigned fund balance. While we're on this page, just want to point out that this is one of the key management pages, or users of the financial statements look at the budget versus actual very frequently. So, if you look at that column on the far right, the variance column, the last number on the bottom, it's a positive 178, 137. The primary driving factor of your positive budget versus actual variance relates to a couple lines up, the 155, 536. That is your unexpended appropriations in fiscal 2017. Now, if you remember what I was just saying about the very low fund balance of 49, if you didn't have that, you would be driving your unassigned fund balance into a negative position. So, very careful to watch things when they get, important to watch things when they get that close.
I guess I'm not understanding that whole, and maybe it's because I had to step out, sorry, but, so you're saying it's actually a good thing that we had that unexpend, those unexpended funds at the end of the year?
And I know, you know, every-
I think two things mixed up.
Well, one of the reasons for that, remember, we had about a quarter of a million dollars in tuition that we had.
It was, you know, like that-
We'd have at the assigned, at least in there.
But we've also got, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've got the 2.5% set aside, and we've also got about 10 tuition placements in there as well. So, although, you know, the $49,000 is certainly closer than we usually get to, with those two capital reserve accounts, that would assist as well. Is that right?
It would. You're correct on that. And that is a mechanism that most school districts in New Hampshire are using, is those reserve funds, just to set aside in case, you know, most of them are capital-related, unexpected expenses and so forth that they can tap into.
But even with those, that doesn't get us close to that 3%.
Well, if you had-
I mean, it might get us like, what, 1.5% or something like that?
Without those 16 move-ins, that's 300,000. That number goes from $49,000 to $300,000.
But again, I just want it, I want it, that that public statement, that it's out there, that we should have like 3% of unexpected funds at the end of the year.
Because I would expect it to be zero.
Right, because that's what the town is saying, is that we should be budgeting zero, and that we should be using-
Budget rate.
Right, and that's what they're saying, but actually, we should have like a 3% because of-
It's a little, it's a little low from what we typically see for New Hampshire school districts. You know, we're generally seeing about 3%. And again, there's recommendations from GFOA and DRA about what would be considered to be an added unassigned fund balance. So, perhaps, you know, what we do recommend, not so much in school districts, but some other types of municipalities in New Hampshire, is what they do is they create a fund balance policy. So, they aim to have a certain percentage, or an X number of, like, two to three months in the bank, that kind of thing, certainly. I don't think you could have that. I mean, a month is going to be a million dollars in the bank, and that would be probably a little bit, a little bit too high.
See, I didn't think we could do that. I thought the SAU could do that, but I didn't think we could. So, because I understood that from the joint board, being able to, you know, we had this discussion as the joint board, having that cushion for the, because not always the money's coming in as it's going out, and stuff like that. But I didn't realize that we, as a school, could do that, and that, but that's what our unassigned fund is, that's what-
Well, that's what the 2.5% is for as well, right? I mean, have we run into any cash flow problems? Or are we-
No.
Not in three years, but there was a few years back.
Last year is about as tight as I want to get it.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, but like I said, we had to cover the 16 move-ins at a quarter of a million dollars, and we did that without even diving into the 2.5% or the tuition capital reserves, so.
And Barbie, while you were gone, Cheryl referred them to page 27, which makes up like the committed amounts that you have set aside. So, your capital reserves, and your voted transferred for reserve funds, and your 2.5%.
So, that's 718,854.
Yep, that's the breakdown of that. And it's, I had mentioned that I met with the audit committee, and they found that breakdown page in the footnote disclosure to be particularly useful.
And I guess that's kind of like a balancing act between what we do and what the town perceives, because I see what you're saying, and we deal with that with three towns. So, like Cheryl had pointed out, last year, the year before, we had, it was like $700,000, but that was because of unexpended funds, unanticipated revenue, and all that stuff. So, I think the problem is, I think if we were consistent in turning back the same amount every year, then it wouldn't affect the tax rate as much. But when one year you're, we're turning back $700,000, and then this year it's only 50, it's kind of like trying to find a happy medium. I think if we were there with the $300,000 or $200,000, I think that would, you know, be better. Because that's the other thing, it's against the law to overspend your budget as well. So, we really can't, that's not even an option.
Does it make sense to have a capital reserve fund for evening out the tax rate?
Well, that's what your 2.5% set aside is for. You can utilize that to offset the tax rate, too.
Well, we have to get permission for that one, don't we? No?
Well, you do, but that's one of the, one of the things that you can use it for. You can use it for an emergency over expenditure, or you can use it for leveling off spikes and valleys in your, in your tax rate.
You guys are doing a great job at building up your capital reserve funds. So, and that's what that money is there for. We did discuss that last year about transferring that money for those 16 students that had moved in. There was discussion about that, I remember, at the town level as well. We were going through budget season this time last year. So, again, all that stuff is there to protect you.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I just wanted it known out there that, you know, 2.5% is what we should shoot for in budgeting each year, to actually have 2.5% in our budget as-
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year, every year.
And, and like we said, I mean, if we didn't get those 16 move-ins, which was a little abnormal, we're pretty much there.
And when you think about it, I mean, 2.5%, 3% on a $12 million budget, to me, I think that's a good job.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
You know, I mean, I think, I think that's as close as you can get it.
Well, and I think so, too, but, but like I said, the taxpayers are, you know, certain people are saying that we should have none. We should be spending, we should be asking for what we need, but that's not exactly the way that we should be doing it. It's because, it's not because we're budgeting wrong. That's what I want out there.
It's a little bit of a balancing act.
Right. Yep. It's a different balancing act than your household balancing.
Exactly, yep.
Which is what a lot of people look at.
That we return to the town to offset the tax rate. Do we know that it's going to offset the tax rate?
That would be a question for your selectmen.
I mean, do we know exactly, like, hey, we just, I know we didn't give all the whole $700,000 back, because we spent some of it, but it was what?
Well, no, we didn't have anywhere near $100,000 last year.
No, it was the year before.
Year before.
Yeah.
So, basically, what happens is that report that I do that's due by September 1st, so that pretty much gives the DOE and the DRA how much money that we had left in surplus. So, basically, what it is, we do not physically write a check to the town for that money. What they do is they take it off of our, off your local appropriation. So, they take the total amount that we budgeted for, and then they subtract out all the revenues from the state aid, to the adequacy aid, to Medicaid, CAT aid, and all that information that we provide with them, and I work with them on that, too. And then they basically take that amount off of your town appropriation. And they divvy it up between the residents. So, it's not like we actually send them a check. They just take it off of what-
So, the DRA and the DOE does it, the town does, they don't say, oh, here's $500,000 we can offset the tax rate.
Well, then it goes to the town, so I don't know exactly what happens at the town level. I don't know if we return $700,000, and if they get to keep 200, but from what I understand, that's not what happens.
Yeah, because I don't know.
I think each town is different.
If it's law saying that it's supposed to offset the tax rate, and they're using it to build bridges and roads, I want to know if that's what they're doing.
I don't think there's a law, because I think each town is different.
And I think that's what the joint board was working on in regards to the SAU surplus and returning that to figure out what would happen with them.
Can we?
Last I heard, though, is when your, when your release date goes into the town general fund, the town then can choose to buy down the tax rate. If they do, the DRA tells them-
What to do?
The calculations and all that stuff. I'm guessing it's some sort of proportional, you know, breakup between the, you know, probably, they probably take the town, my guess, right? They take the town budget, the school budget, figure out what the ratios are, and then, you know, do the taxes based on that. That's my guess. So, I mean, if you look at the town budget from last year, they went up as well, even though their, their assessment went up, even though that their budget went down as well. And I don't think they had as big of a surplus as we had last year. I think part of our surplus went towards reducing the town tax rate as well. I don't know that for sure. We'd have to look into that, but that's what I think is going on.
Can we look into that? After we find out?
I think you have somebody on the joint board already looking into that.
Yeah, I think Sue was-
Sue's looking into it for about three districts.
I think she gave us, she gave us an answer, I just don't remember.
All right.
I think we were told that it was a-
That was a question in all three, all three towns.
And that's why I can't remember, Shane, because it's three different towns. I can't remember who said what. I'm sorry.
Moving on, so-
Sorry, Cheryl.
No, 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 it's okay, all good. On page 17, just wanted to point out that these are your fiduciary funds. They represent the balance in the student activity fund account at the year-end. And then beyond page 17, you have the notes to the financial statements that are required in order to get the clean audit opinion. A good portion of those footnote disclosures relate to the GASB 68, the net pension liability, and the OPEB obligation. And next year, with the implementation of GASB 75 and the full liability, now it's going to be called the OPEB liability, it's going to expand even more. I wanted to mention that you did get a new valuation from the actuary this year in order to prepare these financial statements. It's good for two years, and it already includes all of the information that you need to implement GASB 75 next year, so you're good to go on that, and that's not going to hold up any financial statements.
Any other questions on the financial statement?
So, there are no, I'm jumping ahead here, but no management note?
Yep, that was the next thing I was going to mention. There is no management letter this year. The auditing standards that we conduct the audit by have certain requirements. If there's internal control issues, or material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies, we have to report those to you, and happy to report that there were none. As part of our meeting with the audit committee, we shared with them comments and recommendations, just small issues that we noted during the audit process that didn't rise to the level of a management letter comment. But that was a good discussion to have, and again-
Do we call any of those?
We, I attached them, actually. So, I emailed you all out a governance letter today from them to have, and I handed you out one tonight with your bound copy of the audit on the last page of that. Yep. On the last page of that, there's a nice color-coded thing that they did. The black is for prior year issue recommendation. The blue font is the fiscal year '17 status, and the red font is the new issues that were noted this year.
Can you explain the review of detailed payroll reports?
I think, yep, sure. I think what, a good internal control, or way to further improve your internal controls related to the processing of payroll, is to have somebody that's not involved in processing the payroll before it comes to this level for approval, to have somebody look at the detailed reports, and to make sure that things are reported properly, gross wages, wages are reported properly for taxation purposes, federal income tax, retirement system. It's also a good check to have somebody outside of the processing to just kind of look at the names on there, to make sure that they're current employees, and that nothing's jumping out as unusual. So, that's kind of the recommendation that we were making.
Can I ask you, how is that different than what we're doing now? Is it just the level of detail?
Okay, so basically, we are reviewing the payroll. We do have another person doing it, but what Melton Heath has recommended is that we actually put a signature page on there. So, when we got this, we've already implemented that. There's a signature page on it.
Signature page on what?
So-
Shane, that, that's been checked, right?
Yep. So, basically, Missy, Missy.
Suppose somebody comes to your office, we'll sign it.
Right, so you have, you have your person that processes payroll, and then when she's done with it, I have, at the beginning of each year, I create a payroll spreadsheet that has everybody's names, their contract, their health, their dental, their New Hampshire retirement. And then I divide it out by how many pays that they want, 26, 22, whatever the contract is for. So, then Missy sets everybody up in payroll, and then she does it her own way, and then we have this as a check for somebody to review and make sure everybody's getting their correct pay, their correct withholdings, their correct deductions out of their payroll check. So, we've been doing that. The only thing that was missing was a signature page. She wasn't signing off on it. And that's one of the roles that the new bookkeeper, the part-time bookkeeper, was hired for, so that's what she's doing. And with vacation next week, I'll be doing it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a couple of questions, just because I'm not understanding them?
Sure.
So, food service throughout this, there's like four or five different numbers for it. And I just wanted to sort of understand exactly what, so starting on page seven, the food service fund, there's a negative 3,534. And then it's the same number at the bottom. And I, and I wasn't sure if this was the amount that we paid to, I don't even know what to call her, the person that was doing our, you know, free and reduced lunch and stuff.
Sure, sure. The best page to get, to look at to get an understanding of the results of operations of the food service fund is page 14. This is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So, up at the top, you'll see the food service fund has its own column, its own, and using fun, fund accounting is an accounting mechanism to segregate resources. So, you can see up at the top that the intergovernmental revenues, the 52,339, that represents the state and federal funds that are, that are earned for the food service fund. And then beneath that, those are the charges for the, for the food service program to the individuals, 70,053. So, the total revenue is 122,392, and the total expenses going down were 137,154. So, at that point in the game, just the federal and state monies and the user charges, less the, the operational costs, you are in a deficit of 14,762. Keep continuing down. Your, part of your budget includes a subsidy, I'll call it a subsidy, it's really a budgeted transfer to the food service fund, and so you'll, you'll see that 11,228, reducing the 14,762 operating deficit to 3,534. So, that's really the, the results of operations for the year for the food service fund.
Okay. So, Barbie, you are correct. So, there's that position that's in there. There's other things that Cafe Services does not pay for that are in your budget, such as propane, equipment repairs, replacement, any of that stuff. equipment repairs, replacement, any of that stuff.
Okay. So this is, because I was expecting we paid around $3,000 to Food Service, or 3,500.
But I, but the propane and stuff was in our budget. This, this, to me, is, this was not part of our budget. This came out of the general fund. Sorry, Gary, I keep hitting that. It came out of our general fund above and beyond that section in food services, because we had Cafe Services in there, we had the propane in there, we had, you know, fixed equipment, all of that stuff in there. So this is above and beyond that that we had to take out of the general fund, where we used to put aside, what was it, $25,000? This is really what we paid above and beyond in the food services this year, was the 3534.
It was propane, equipment.
Right.
And, and the subsidy, the other subsidy, the-
Exactly.
3,000 we're expecting, 3,500 we're expecting.
Okay. So all these other-
And then don't forget, the other part that plays into that food service part is that in order to get the financials where I need them to be at the end of the year, I need to make an adjustment for inventory. So whatever Cafe Services has on inventory here, I need to make that amount on our inventory agree to what they have in the cafeteria. So my only offset at that point is that you have to account for that in the inventory, and my offset is going to be your expenses.
So like on page eight, where it says, food services fund, activity funded by general fund, that 49,844, that was really not the amount that was taken out of our general fund.
Right, right.
Okay. So it's really just that bottom line, $3,534.
That ultimately will need to be subsidized by the general fund.
Okay. All right. There were just so many numbers for food services in here that I was, because then there's a 16,377, and I was like, well, where does that play in and everything? So, okay.
Yep. Really, the best page is page 14.
Okay. Look at. Thank you. And can I go back to the recommendation page as well?
Yes.
Because I just want to let you know that for the new issues for this year, the other one was for the old food service fund receivables were noted. You all did make a motion to write that information off, and we have since done so in the system. But I also wanted to let you know that it did come up at that meeting that we were discussing that, why in the past couple of years have you not had any? You, Northwood actually got an anonymous donor, just like Stratford does. So you have actually somebody that calls us now and tries to find out who owes outstanding balances, and they send us a check for that amount.
Oh, that's very nice.
So whoever is out there, thank you. I mean, it's helping. So, so that's one of the things that is helping to clean up your past due balances.
And that money is going right to that account.
It goes, it goes, so we apply it because we invoice everybody at 6:30. So that amount goes directly to their invoices.
Well, thank you to whomever that is. That's very nice.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Very great job to the business administrator in her office and Dr. Godomsky and the SAU.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melton Heath. Thank you, Cheryl.
You make a great Tim.
Sitting in his spot.
Yes, please, come again. We'll call you Tim.
Merry Christmas, Cheryl. I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Moving on, I don't think we have any need for a non-public session.
No.
So we'll move to the opening public comment. Is there anybody who would like to take this opportunity to address the board? Seeing none, is there any board member who would like to take this opportunity to address the board?
I just want to say, I want to thank administration and all the teachers and parent professionals that have gone through this drastic change throughout the year, and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And will you please stand up for the camera? Take a bow.
Yes, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Alfred and Ms. Young for standing out there in the cold this morning. It was very cold.
It was cold.
And seeing the kids smile when they saw Mr. Alfred standing there and the waves and the honks and just the few minutes that I was there, it was, it was awesome.
Yeah. Like, oh, my god.
Yeah, I had a couple of kids hide their face, like they didn't know who I was. I found them later.
And there was a couple, there was a couple parents like-
I thought he only put it on for the meeting. I didn't realize.
I have pictures from this morning. He stood out there in the cold without a jacket on, just the gloves. He was awesome. Wow.
Well done. Mr. Frostbite.
I don't need my ears.
Yeah, right. Next time, come see me. I'll get your hat.
Public comment session, and move on to approval of school board minutes. We have some public minutes starting on page 41 in our packet.
Motion, 41?
Oh, yeah. Motion to approve, these are the non-public minutes.
Non-public, first.
I'm sorry.
41 is non-public.
You're it. Non-public minutes, starting on page 41. Second. Any discussion on these? All in favor of approving these minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have public media minutes starting on page 44.
Motion to approve public minutes from December 7.
Second. Any discussion or corrections on these? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I believe that's all of our minutes. Ms. Whitmore.
Hi.
Hi.
So page 54 begins my memo, and the next page is the revenue statement, where we are so far throughout the year. It still shows that we have not received anything for catastrophic aid. That is typically one check that we do receive from the state once all of that paperwork is done with the special ed department. And again, that is from, that doesn't even account for this year, because they are one year in arrears for that. So that would be for special education students from last fiscal year. And I do know that Scott did receive information on that recently, so I'm hoping that maybe we'll receive that money within the next month. And, and at that point, we can know if we're actually over or under on that amount.
Adequacy as well? Is that-
I'm sorry?
The adequacy grant, does that come in?
Um, that comes in periodically. We get that more about quarterly, I believe. So that is slowly coming in.
Do we anticipate that's going to be what we budgeted for?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So they give us an estimate around November. I sent that to everybody, I think, November 15. And pretty much, I believe, they finalize it within six to nine months after that. But just for budgeting purposes, they can only give us an estimate right now for next year. Page 56 begins our expenses. Once we get into January and February and pretty much finalize with the budgets, which you guys just did this month, thank you very much. I really do like the Northwood process and how you guys flow. It's a, it's a really nice process that you have here in the school and the town.
For what?
So pretty much you guys are done. We're still working on the other two.
This year did go very nicely.
Yeah.
Now, doesn't, I mean, doesn't Nottingham have to be done around the same time as us for their budget committee?
They do, but we, so, so we've met with their budget committee twice, and we have another one in January.
Yes, tonight. This year did go very nicely.
Yeah. Anything of note in here that we should be concerned with, or?
I don't have anything right now. There's nothing on the radar that I've heard about. I do think there was a request from Tom. I'm not sure if that's been taken care of or not.
I'm bringing that up.
Yeah, Boiler.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
We'll revisit that then.
So- Ms. Young's report.
Right. And then starting in January, February, what I'll start doing is adding that anticipated line to get a better feel for next year for where we don't have purchase orders or substitutes or anything like that. So I'll start working on that probably the end of January, beginning of February.
Does anyone have any further questions for Ms. Whitmore?
And then your bottom line balance right now is about $500,000. So that's where you are right now for unexpended funds. And then I did email you all out that new bank reconciliation thing with all the backup, because I didn't want to, we had discussed not putting all the backup in here, because it kind of bogs it down. But there's your bank reconciliation page on page 65 for November.
Can, can we go back to the ground maintenance?
I can do whatever you want. Whatever.
So I know, that's at 6,500, I mean.
Page you want, just.
Um, 62 line, first one, the ground maintenance in the middle, 6,500.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't spent any of that. I just, isn't that like for, like mowing the lawns and, you know, during the summer and is, who's-
I can look into that. I don't remember where exactly you guys were during the summer staffing-wise, but I can look into that.
I know we were down. So I don't know if like the, you know, our custodial wages are paid for that and not our ground maintenance wa, wages. And if so, if we're not going to use it, it'd be something that we look into putting towards the-
Yeah, I wonder, we do, we do see, if you look at the first line on there, we do have some overtime, custodial overtime wages on there.
Yeah, that's, is it high?
It's not high, but, well, for this time of the year, maybe.
But I do know that that's not just during summertime. I do know that that money can be used in June when school gets out, too.
Yeah.
I doubt that $6,500 will be used from June 21st or 22nd through June 30th. But, I'll definitely have somebody look into the time cards for that, because Tom's pretty good about writing his account line numbers on those time cards.
I'm not sure if this is a question you can answer, Marjorie, or not. I remember vaguely hearing something, and I can't remember if it was here at the joint board, that we used to be part of a cooperative buying system for supplies and stuff like that. I could see Bob shaking his head. And that had gone defunct or whatever.
Yep.
Have we become part of a new one?
There isn't a new one at this point.
There isn't. So we just have to-
SES was a collaborative between 15, 20 districts.
Yeah.
And it was, it didn't end well, and it hasn't been regenerated.
Okay. So just more for my curiosity, I guess, do we have to buy things from certain places? Like, do we have a contract with, say, WB Mason or something?
Amazon?
Nope. No? Okay.
Nope.
All right. And then my other question is, and I think it was brought up one other time, was about the solar. Have we looked into the solar at all? Again, because I just see, keep looking at these, the amount of electricity that we're using here, and I don't know if that's something-
You want an electricity study done?
What's that?
Do you want an electricity study done?
Well, I guess just, is it worth, well, if we're looking at doing the roof in like, you know, 10 years or whatever, is it worth the solar panels being up there and, you know, stuff like that, looking around and seeing?
Well, that is one of the things that you do have to consider, because you obviously wouldn't want to get solar panels on a roof if you're going to be replacing it anytime in the near future.
Right. So.
There is also the, you could either buy the solar panels or have the electrical company-
Well, a lot of times, companies will come in, install them themselves, and you're just renting them, and you're buying into a certain price. You're buying into electricity at today's price, let's say, going on for the life of the solar panels.
Nottingham did that. And I think Bob and I were just talking about this. I think they're in maybe fi, year five or six. So they went and they had a study done. And basically, so we stayed with the company, but with that, with the program that we're using, it's not costing us any more money for the changes that they made within the building.
Yeah, it wasn't solar panels.
So it was pretty much paying the same amount.
It was all, it was all the lighting in the building. They redid the lighting, run at the entire cost, and then we're paying for it over time without increasing the bill.
Well, yeah. So that's something I'd like to look at. I mean, I know when we were in Arizona, and of course, we don't get the same sun that they get, but the high school there, they put in solar panels, and they actually have sold money, sold the power back to the whatever, and they make money off it. And I'm not saying that we could do that, because I don't know what kind of sun we get, you know, but they say spring is the best time. That's what I'm hearing on the radio for solar panels. So I'm thinking if we could look into it now, you know, if we do have any money left over at the end of the year, it might be a way to save money in the long time.
It might not even cost money.
That's true. It might not.
It may be just getting a contract and, and they'll install it, and they maintain.
Right. But I'm just, every, every time we have the manifest, and I look at the bills, and I look at the, the amount that the electricity costs around here to, you know, do all these tiffs.
Flat roof to use as well.
Yeah. So I just wondered if we could look into that.
Yeah.
Something we can-
Yep.
Put on, let's, can we put that in the parking lot? Because I think it'd be worth following up on as well.
Okay.
I think they give, well, and I don't know if they give it to the school, too. They give tax credits, but we don't get taxed, right?
Right.
Just thinking. Dropping like a $5 rebate through some company right now. So, you know.
Yeah, it might be.
Well, it's one of those things where it's actually kind of hard sometimes to prove. Like, we just had to fill out some information for a grant for one of the other schools. And they're like, well, we need your C, 501(c)(3), which is a nonprofit certification. I'm like, well, we don't have that. We're a school district. We don't pay taxes. And it was very hard, I don't know why, but it's very hard for some people like that to understand. And I'm like, we're not, I'm not over here making money off of a school district. So.
That's for sure.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Whitmore.
You're welcome.
I think we are, have anything else if you need to take off?
Do you mind if I stay for the boiler discussion?
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to know where we're going with that, that's all.
Fair enough to let you free.
Thanks. I will leave as soon as that is over.
All right. We'll move on to the principal report. Ms. Young, I see. Don't you have a, less than a page in here?
I do. Good evening. So lockers, we did get an updated quote. We went with 112 lockers in the 78 hallway, because they're double tier, so we need even numbers. We wanted the mannequins to be the same size, so we went with 112. And then 16 single lockers in the 56 hallway. So that comes in a little bit lower. The original estimate or quote was 2,600. This comes at 2,452. One thing that we'll want to think about is sloped tops, which we have now, versus flat tops. The rationale for sloped tops is that kids can't pile stuff on top of them. The rationale against them is the tops of lockers are always going to get dusty and dirty, and the sloped tops, you can see the dust and dirt, whereas the flat tops, you can't. I would advocate for flat tops in the 78 hallway and sloped in the 56, just because the existing lockers in the 56 already have sloped. So it would be uniform.
Like consistency.
I do. I do have, if you flip to the back of this, there are some pictures and the drawings, if you want to pass that around. And then we'll also, if we want to move ahead with that, he does need a commitment by December 28th in order to keep this price. So just keep that in mind. And then if we want to move forward, we'll need to think about-
So to note, that's before our next meeting.
Right.
So it would have to be tonight.
Tonight.
Well, I think there's still that question out there, though, that was brought up at the budget committee about, because we're thinking of doing this out of the-
Yeah, I was thinking about that. I think, can we, Ms. Whitmore, maybe this is a question for you. Can we spend that out of what we have in unexpendant funds for now? And then if we get close again at the end of the year, take that out of capital reserve to make up for it?
No, but that was the question, though, is that building maintenance fund is, can, that was the question that came up at the budget committee. Is this something that can come out of the building?
The legal feedback that I got was, yes, you can.
Okay. So actually, that's not it. That was, that was the, wasn't it whether it was a, whether it was a spendable fund or whether we had to go back to the town and ask to spend it?
Yeah, there was, there was some concern about it.
It was that clarification.
Yeah.
If it was something about them.
Versus the capital reserve fund.
Say that again?
An expendable trust versus a capital reserve.
Yes, yes.
I believe you would have to have a public hearing, but-
If it, well, we only have to have a public hearing if it's a-
If it's, if it's a capital reserve fund. I think that's what people were saying, is that if it's a capital reserve fund, we would have a public hearing. If it's expendable trust, then it's something we could expend out of. However, I don't think anyone had any solid data about how our, how it was actually started to begin with.
Right, but I-
The Warren article did say capital reserve fund, though. Does say that.
Which is the one we can't spend, we have to have a meeting on.
Right.
Bob's going to check with legal.
Okay. Because I would hate to spend that money. I mean, not that I don't think we would have it, but I'd hate to spend it out of the, our unexpendant funds that we think we're going to have, and then not, not be able to buy something that the kids need.
I believe I'm right, that even, even if you have to have a public hearing, a public hearing is for feedback. You still have the authority to spend the money.
Yeah, the public can't say, well, I don't want you to spend it. That's all they can say.
The public hearing is simply to provide you with feedback.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about that, either.
Yeah. I thought it was a vote to say if we, I thought it, what they were saying at the budget committee, again, I don't know, was that it had to be voted on or something like that for the, for the town, from the town's people.
At a budget hearing?
I don't think so.
I don't know. I don't know.
The town, yeah. The town always uses capital, well, not all the time, but when they do, it's the board of select-
But isn't that what they put on there? Can we use this money out of our capital reserve funds to use it for this? That we vote on that on, on voting day. When you go into the ballot box, those are there.
I believe you simply have to have a public hearing.
Okay. Well, if we can just make sure.
I will do that.
I mean, how much is it again? 20, 24?
24,522.
Because we don't have to, we don't have to spend the money, or say we're going to
to spend the money right now for the rest of it, the walls and stuff like that. I mean, I know we're going to, because if we're going to buy them, we're going to, but we need a commitment before the end of the night. So, well, we need a commitment before the end of the night, so...
Yeah, I don't believe you need to...
We're going to have to spend that money out of the unexpendable funds. That's, I mean, that's basically what we're saying.
We'll be overspending a line, yeah.
Right, until we know if we can use that, so...
Right.
Well, and if the board makes a decision tonight, then we still have, like, through next Wednesday before we, you know, to get those answers. So, obviously, if it turns out it's not legal, then...
Actually, we could have a quick meeting or something like that.
Right. And I would, so, to do the sloped tops would add a little bit more, and I'm not sure exactly how much, so I do want to just put that in there, that it would be a little bit more for 5-6 to have slopes.
16 singles?
Yeah.
But still, the original quote was 26, so I can't imagine that it would...
Right, so, if we did all sloped tops for 7-8 and 5-6, it would be an additional $1,200. So, I would say probably 400 more, I'm not sure. He didn't, I didn't want to, you know, make the department break it out quite so particularly.
So, I mean, if we have, so, our quote without the sloped tops is 24,522.
Yep.
And so, maybe we should authorize up to 20, would you be comfortable if we did up to 25,000?
Well, aren't we just authorizing that we're going to buy them from him?
Well, you're committing to them, basically.
Yeah, that's what they need, is just the commitment.
Oh, okay, but still, then we should, we should...
But are we commit, so you're asking for the commitment for 112 double and 16 single, right, and then for an amount up to $25,000?
I think that would be fine.
Yeah.
I just want to add the total 1,200 into it, just to be safe. That would be fine, too.
I can't believe that company's going to balk it.
I make a motion to...
Use it up to $25,722 to, for the lockers of...
112 double lockers for the 7-8 and 16 lockers.
16 single tier with slopes.
On the second.
27, 25,722.
Up to, right, you said?
Yeah.
With the expectation that we will probably take at least some of this out of capital reserve, not all of it, at some point in the future. I'll, you seconded that?
I did.
Okay, any discussion on this? Look at that first.
Good?
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then, the next thing to consider is the removal of and disposal of the existing lockers. Tom and his crew could do that, but there's the question of what to do with them and how to get them there, because that, there's a lot of lockers to throw and, ask Tom to throw in the back of his pickup truck and make, you know, 30 trips somewhere.
Have you checked with Harding? Drop them off the container?
Harding will take them, I bet.
Well, and don't they pay for them, too, like, because they're metal?
Yeah, they might even pay for them.
I mean, we might be able to make a little money off it, even if it's 100 bucks, might pay for those slopes.
I mean, Harding is right down the road.
Yeah, they'll drop off the container.
And they might pick up. I don't know if they pick up.
Because that's what they do for the town, because the town holds the metal, the metal recycling, those are Harding metals, so they just put the cans there, then pick them up.
Yeah, I would look into them, just because, I mean, maybe we can offset some of the money they would pay for it, for it up, and, you know, we might not have to pay anything or worry about Tom grabbing it.
That'd be nice if they don't.
Only thing they probably have to do is just get the lockers out.
Near the door, or something.
Yeah. Throw it in the truck, maybe, or something.
Okay, so that would still be our guys' time, so I just want to be clear that that would be an interruption of their regular responsibilities. The estimate that we got from criteria for removing them says, allow two days for this work to be completed. I don't know how many guys they would be providing to do it, but just keep in mind that it would be time spent. So, their quote to take them out is two days, and then 2,650, if you want to look at that.
2,650?
2,600.
That's probably just two days of labor.
Yeah, plus they're going to make money off the metal.
Oh, because they're going to take it away?
They're going to take it away.
Wait, is this, is this, who gave you this quote? I'm sorry.
The same company, for the lockers.
Oh, okay, so they, this, they would dispose of them, is what they're saying? Oh.
Yeah, we just wanted a sense of the amount of time it would take and the cost.
But even with them taking them out, Tom and his crew would, or whoever, would still need to do something with the floors and the walls.
Right.
Well, if we go with Harding metal, too, and let's say Harding comes, and we'll bring a truck, we still need to help them bring them to the door and throw them in the truck, probably, right? So...
Well, and I guess, too, the question is, is if we do it over the summer, can we have Co-Brown kids come in and help? There's volunteer work to lug them and throw them in.
When do you want these in, Mike?
I think we can't do it in a week. I don't think it's feasible to do it over February or for vacation, so I think it would have to start once school was out.
Okay. Do we, we don't have to commit to this price for it?
No, 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 I just, this was really for informational purposes.
Yeah, I'd say, hold on to that. Let's talk to Harding, or another, there's another place in town, too, isn't there?
And another thing is, too, if, like, I know that there's tons of scrappers around here, they would probably say, "I'll come in and do it myself."
I bet that would happen, honestly, yeah.
They're like, "Yeah," you know, so...
Well, yeah, if they want to take it off our hands for free, you know, I can do it.
Okay, so I think we're good on lockers, then?
Yep.
And then, you had asked for us to look at Infinite Campus, and as luck would have it, once Mr. Robert went to the Krista McAuliffe conference last month, he actually talked with Infinite Campus, and he came in the next day, kind of all excited to tell me about it, and I saw him and said, "Hey, I need you to do something for me," and so it actually worked out that it was something he was already thinking about. It is a little bit more expensive. We've not budgeted for it for next year, so we'd want to think about, do we want to reprioritize things that we've already budgeted for, and do the initial $2,000 for Infinite Campus next year, plus the $1,700, or do we just want to include this in the budget cycle for 1920? But it sounds like Co-Brown is really enjoying their transition from MMS to Infinite Campus. Steve noted that the report generation from the office, all of the stuff that the DOE requires at the beginning of the year and the end of the year would be much better with this, would be more productive and efficient for the office staff. So, he is definitely in favor of switching over either next year or the year after.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I love it to the fact, I don't know how elaborate we're going to go with it, if it's just for alerts or what, but, I mean, I know how many days my son has missed, if they're excused or unexcused, I know how many homework assignments he's missing. I could go in there, I could look at all those great, I mean, I know we could do that, too, but it's like, I get alerts, you know?
Well, and that's what I was going to ask, so, do they, does, do the alerts from Co-Brown come from Infinite Campus also? So, does that mean we can get rid of One Call Now and all of that, too?
Yep.
So, the $1,700 isn't just MMS, it's the, I guess, what, like, MMS and Call One Now, it...
Replace that, too.
Those two together, plus $1,700 for Infinite Campus. Okay. Because I didn't know if there was any other things that MMS, I mean, that Infinite Campus would, because MMS, to me, it looked like it was just MMS it was replacing.
Mm-hmm.
But Infinite Campus is, if it does the One Call and the calls and stuff like that, I mean, I get a text, an email, and a phone call, all within, like, five minutes of each other, if that's through Infinite Campus, and I don't know. So, I mean, I think that would be so much better, because parents are always complaining about, "Oh, I get this call from Co-Brown before I get it from Northwood," so, and we can say, "Well, that's exactly how it comes out, too." So, I just think it would be so much better for you guys, especially now if Mr. Robert had, because I know you said last time, he didn't think it was anything that you guys would use here, but if it sounds like it is something that is better for you guys, I mean, I definitely think it's worth looking into. I guess, my question to you guys would be, I'm willing to say, let's switch some money around and spend the $1,700, but...
It would be 3,700.
Because there's a $2,000 setup fee.
Oh, the setup fee, okay, sorry. I mean, I think that's a great idea, but I would have to look to you guys and say, where in the budget would you want to take that from?
Right, and we need to look, there may be some other software things that we budgeted for that Infinite Campus could take over, so it could be that this could absorb some of the other things. We could do the, if we have unexpendable funds at the end of the year, we could do the initial setup out of that, and then just have the $1,700 that we need to figure out for next year. So, we, you know, can definitely continue to look at that and have a better sense in the next month or two.
Okay.
Is there any advantage, too, to using the same system across elementary and high school?
I think certainly for parents of siblings and the two, it would be a nice feature.
But for us, it's not, the elementary school wouldn't really make as much.
I think they're too separate. I don't think we're going to communicate with each other through them, although the, I don't know about the transfer of records from eighth grade to ninth grade.
Right, that's the kind of stuff I was...
Keep hitting that. Sorry. And then, the only other thing we wanted to tell you about was, we've started the conversation with eighth graders about getting ready for Co-Brown. Headmaster Smith and three former students came last week and made a presentation to our eighth graders, and it was just a nice experience to see previous students being really successful, having a lot of enthusiastic things to share, and starting to think, see our eighth graders' wheels start spinning about, "Oh, I do need to get ready. I have a lot to think about." So, we were glad to have them have a good experience. And that's really all we have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Young? Thank you very much.
I just, I don't know if this is, I had this on this page, but I don't know, because we were looking at the steps and everything like that. It was brought up to me by, I can't remember his name, but with redoing the steps out front, if we looked into, and I don't know if it would be any cheaper or anything, or if it would be better in the long run, but like heated steps out front when we redo them, because it would help with, like, snow removal and stuff like that, but the, that type of thing.
I don't know if anybody's looked into that, but we certainly could.
Yeah, because I was just thinking, because it's not something that we're doing for a few months or whatever, but just looking into, you know, then we don't have to put down the salt, which, you know, ruins the concrete and all of that.
What are you asking to do?
Like heated steps out front, yeah, where the front entrance is in there and stuff, and then it just sort of, because it's already, I'm trying to think of his name, who told me, who brought that up.
I have some experience with that from my prior district, and they put them out there, and I, I mean, they weren't steps, but it was like tiles, like the way, and I didn't really notice a huge difference, to be honest with you. I mean, it was still icy.
Okay.
No matter what. There wasn't a big difference, but they were also heated, so...
Okay. I was picturing more, I guess, something like a radiant heat underneath or something more than a tile, I guess, so that it was sort of, so I don't, and I don't know anything about them, he just mentioned them, and I was like, "Well, I'll bring it up, because I don't know anything about them," so...
It certainly looked worth looking into, but I didn't notice a huge difference, to be honest with you.
Gary, I'm moving it back.
So, I got a question about the plowing. Who, I mean, the town does the front parking lot, right?
Yes.
Okay. And they should salt it, right?
As far as I know. They what?
Because it's not, I mean, it's not, they're not doing a good job, so I don't know if it's bothered, if you need to talk to town. It's, I mean, you saw the ice out front. It's, it's bad, and, you know, I had, the other day, you know, I had to have Tom come on and throw some salt down, and I don't think that's on, on the road portion of it. I got the stairs and the walkways and stuff like that, but on the road portion, that should be cleared and salted, like, at least daily, because you never know when, what's going to melt and what's going to freeze again.
I can, I can call the town, see if they can swing through on a more frequent basis.
Being that, like, making sure after the snowstorm's over to go back again, just push them of the snow that's, I mean, there's a foot of snow, I mean, two feet of snow that should be not on the road, it should be off.
I'll find what they do and what they can do.
I'll get my call.
Well, and I know there was that discussion about if they, and I know that the town manager's no longer there, so it might have stopped, but there was the discussion of them doing some of the plowing.
Right.
I don't...
Right, I'll find out.
Okay. Because Tom does it with his truck, and us looking at reimbursing him for that also.
And I know a couple of their trucks were down over there, so it didn't stop at all. I just, it's, it's just dangerous, it's a liability.
Especially with the number of parents and kids.
Drive the other day, so...
All right, let's move on to the enrollment report.
You've got the enrollments on, starting on page 67. Just one thing I want to highlight on page 67, just for future consideration to keep in mind, if you look at your 10, 11, and 12, and your 6, 7, and 8, for next year, you've got fairly even classes coming in and going out. After that, you could, you're sending up some smaller classes, so, budget-wise, you know, just to keep in mind, you've got some years there with 20 to 30 less students.
Well, yeah, 40 less.
Yeah, so, you know, just something to keep in mind as you go through the next two to three years of budget cycles.
It looks like for 1920, you guys would be budgeting for 35 less students.
You just jinxed us, thank you.
Sorry.
That's all I'm saying.
Well, even if your 16 students move in, there's still a saving.
That's like half a million dollars, right there.
Yeah, I mean, double-edged sword, it comes both ways, you know, you, 35 less students, that's, that's great for the budget, but then you send a big bubble through, and all of a sudden, like last year, you know, we had $250,000 that we're finding, so, just thought I'd bring that up, and just something to keep in mind the next couple of years.
Is there, is there something we could do to, like, set up a fund, just, again, for evening out the tax rate? I mean, I know we have the fund for the unexpected kids that come in, that we don't budget for. Might it make sense to have a fund for the changes in student population over time?
You do have that 2.5% that you can utilize to balance your tax rate out year to year, so on the, on the years that it's, it's, I mean, you've got it maxed out now, I believe. You know, I would suggest that on the years that you've got your enrollment down a little You know, I would suggest that on the years that you've got your enrollment down a little bit, and your, your budgets are a little easier, make sure you max that portion out, and then when it gets the other way, you've got it there to offset the taxes a little bit.
So dipping into that a bit. Say, next year or, or whatever. I mean, how, how much wiggle room do we have before we start running to cash flow and stuff? Do we not use any of that cash flow right now, so?
Right now, we're not using any of that.
Okay, so we, so we could possibly do that? That'd be good use of that.
But that was one of the things that, that were specified that you can use that for, is to level off your spikes and dips with your tax rate.
Question on student population. Is that a huge dip? With Co-Brown and Kruse rates?
Well, it, it depends on what the other schools are seeing. We've got, I'm trying to remember, Nottingham, I believe, in the next couple of years is going to go in the opposite direction that you're going to go in. They've got some bubbles going through at the time that you've got some dips. So if it works out that way, then Co-Brown is not going to experience much of a, much of a difference. But you're right, I mean, if everybody gets the dip at the same time.
Intuition goes.
You know, obviously, that's an issue for them.
Well, and there are some other options. There was that option that was given to us in here somewhere, right? Or was that in our joint board one? No, that was, the Pittsfield's is in here, so, yeah, there are other options out there, too.
Possibly.
We do have a contract with Co-Brown as well, though.
Yeah, but how, for how many years?
At least a ten-year contract. I think, I don't know how far we're into it right now, but. Yeah, because if you, just looking at this, next, next year, maybe one of those years when we have. The maximum number of high school students.
Yep.
Right, because we'll have the three big classes, nine and eleven, and then a eighth grade class that's bigger than the twelfth grade class we have right now.
Right.
So next year, we're going to have more high school students than, than average.
Right, and then the next four years, it's going to get better.
Right, right, so maybe next year is, we might want to start doing, doing that, or this year. Is it too late to do it this year?
To utilize some of that for the taxes.
Right. Is tax rate's already been set?
It's been set.
Yeah, it would be for next year.
Next year being eighteen, nineteen.
Right.
Should we have the boiler discussion so that the committee can leave?
I think that's next up, and most of the personnel report anyway, right?
Just one FYI with the personnel report. In your profession, in the SAU-wide professional development plan, it's a, we require one community PD rep. Kate McNally has been our community rep for the last four or five years, doing a great job. And we have a stipend of five hundred dollars for Kate, and that's split between the three districts. So a hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars is for the PD rep, Kate McNally, as a community rep.
I'll move to approve that nomination.
I thought it was informational.
Well, you probably should have a nomination since she's not technically an employee.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Boiler?
The boiler, you can see on page seventy. I asked Jocelyn to put it in an email to me just to outline what, what Tom had talked about, so I'll let you read that, and then we can have a discussion. My understanding in reading this and talking to Jocelyn, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Tom feels that, that it's, it's safe to operate for the remainder of this year. So you've got a couple of options coming down to the end. You could use unexpendited funds, should there be some at the end of the year, or certainly the capital reserve account.
Just beyond the building maintenance that we already have budgeted? I mean, do we have room in that line for this?
Well, presently.
Overall, you have twenty-two thousand dollars left in your custodial. Page sixty-two of your packet.
So I mean, as.
Building maintenance has a budget of twenty-five. You've spent almost twenty, with fifty-three hundred remaining.
Sorry, what line are you looking at?
Building maintenance, twenty-six, twenty, fifty-four, thirty, zero, zero, one.
So the insurance premium there, that four thousand, that's not encumbered, that's because that twenty-five thousand, one-eighty-two was the amount of our premium period.
Exactly. So that money's left there.
And the health insurance that's left there, though, but if we hired, are we staff, fully staffed now? We're not, are we?
For custodial?
Yeah. Oh, we are, okay.
You didn't see the sign out there, so we're good.
We do have one part-time custodian who's technically a substitute custodian, but he's here every day, so. Because like the six thousand in custodial wages, we could be seeing some of that eaten, eaten up in overtime wages.
So the encumbered, the encumbered amount on that line, too, is that?
Encumbered for a reason, or is this something you?
Yep, so basically, someone in the business office sits down with Tom and tries to come up for a feel of what he has spent in the past in regards to vendors, and how much he'll be using again this year. So that's why that five thousand to me, right now, at this time of year, that, that's, that's pretty low.
Yeah, yeah.
For twenty-five thousand dollars to have in that budget.
Especially if we're going to rip out lockers and paint floor or paint walls, and, because that would be maintenance, wouldn't it? It would be maintenance.
When would we have to contract this work by?
Say that again?
When would we have to contract this work by? I'm just wondering if we can wait, if it's not going to be done till the summertime anyway, if we could wait a little bit, see what.
Don't we have to put this out to bid anyways at fifteen thousand? Don't we have to get quotes or whatever?
We should.
See, maybe we could get a little bit cheaper.
We should.
Yeah, well, that's definitely first, first step, yeah. I'm just wondering if we, if we waited, since we're not doing it till over the summer anyway, wait till we see what we have in our surplus.
But the feeling is, is that this isn't a safety issue and that it can wait. Okay.
If you'd like, I can put it on the parking lot, so we don't lose track of it.
Or should we just go out to bid?
And then earmark it for, well, I'd hate to go out to bid too soon, because.
Right.
Okay.
So if we put it on the parking lot and put it on for, like, around March, we'll get a good reading as to,
Yeah, where we're staying financially.
What we're going to have left, we can put a RFP out at that point.
I think that's a good idea.
Then by then, I'll be anticipating and trying to get a better feel for where we're going to be at the end of the year, so.
Yeah, it makes it easier.
Okay, we will do that.
Thanks.
I mean, I think it needs to be done. I just think it's a matter of when and.
Right.
Where we're going to spend the money at.
Yeah, because if we do it over the summer, I mean, we could use a surplus or a capital reserve if we're doing it over the summer. Or if we find there's not enough money, we may want to budget it for next year. When we do that. I think I can live in another year.
I'd hate to.
Yeah, no, not a good solution, but.
No, I don't think we could go another year. We are, we, like, we will fail any inspections of the boiler.
Yeah, they're sixteen years old, so, and life expectancy's usually around a while, so.
You're right, we could.
I'm just thinking, if this is what, the second year in a row, something's gone wrong with the boilers.
They're getting old.
Well, this is not the tractor.
Oh, actually, there was nothing in there from the tractor this time. Where's Tim when there's no tractor?
All right, so we've got some correspondence from Pittsfield School. Did you want to just give us a summary of that?
On page seventy-one, you, you've got some correspondence with the Pittsfield School District. It's just a, a letter from their superintendent. Their enrollment has been dropping, and they just wanted to share with area districts that they are willing to and encouraging taking tuition students into their district, so just food for thought. And I brought that to the Stratford and the, I believe, the Nottingham boards as well. So just informational at this point, unless the board would like to do anything with it. And I will get in touch with the superintendent over there and just let them know that it's, I've shared it, and it's being considered.
Well, I'd certainly be interested if there's some programs that they offer that maybe Co-Brown does not. Right, if we have students that might be interested in some particular thing that Co-Brown is not fulfilling for them.
Okay.
So maybe just some investigation to see what, what's available, right?
Yeah, because that was the interesting conversation. I wish, what is it, Joe McCaffrey, is that his name? That was the, part of the conversation that I had with him, too, is that Co-Brown is very focused on college-bound kids, and, and I think that's great and everything, but not every kid is a college-bound kid.
I don't think that's, I don't think that Co-Brown is focused on college-bound, college-bound kids at all.
I think they're more focused on college-bound kids.
They have a lot of.
I mean, they prop them for it, but I mean, there's, they got a huge program.
Yeah, they have a lot.
They're getting more of their technical type stuff, but if you look at, like, Concord High School, they have a lot more tech-type stuff. And not every kid is, is college-bound, or not every.
That's why I think it might be worth looking into.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, is that I think that if they have more tech-type things.
Co-Brown is far more advanced than, you know, Future Farmers America and Tech and Pittsfield is. You're looking at Pittsfield as being.
But you never know. There may be, there may be some small program.
I can find out if they've got any, any different programs.
Yeah, I mean, like, I mean, I don't know what it is, but who knows?
Yeah.
If there is something, and, and it's something that one of our students has an intense interest in, it might make sense to send it in. Worth looking into at least, I mean, I think we should, we should see what the difference is. I'm with you. I doubt that will.
Doubt is anything.
They'll do something like that, but we should look into it at least.
Does that be violating a subcontract we have with Co-Brown?
That's the other thing that'd be interesting.
Does this find out information, though?
No.
No, I'm thinking further ahead.
I guess we'd have to look at, too, when did we re-sign with Co-Brown? What is our?
I'd have to check the date.
Yeah.
We've got contracts all over the place, so.
And why doesn't, I mean, I know that Co-Brown doesn't want to take one in seven hundred students. Is that, they like that seven, seven-ten mark offer to take Pittsfield's?
Well, that was, that was a discussion for a while. I know that Pittsfield was thinking about, and I think they took a vote, to close their high school altogether. And that failed. They decided to keep their high school open. So there, the next thing is to see if they can attract other students to come in.
Natural thing to do, right? They don't have enough students at the high school. They're putting out the feelers to all the towns around to see if this.
Right, and that's what they're doing. Basically saying, our doors are open.
Well, and they might start offering things that, you know, other high schools don't, to attract some, to, to attract certain, you know, there's certain pockets of kids that aren't being served or whatever, so it's just worth, worth looking into.
That would make sense for them to do that.
Yeah, just informational, so that it's out there.
Yeah, but we should check into our contract with Co-Brown, too. We may not be allowed to do this, so if that's the case. You have anything else?
I think that's it.
Any questions for our superintendent? Oh, we have, we have future meetings. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
Okay, new business. We have, on our agenda, reconsideration of the school deliberative session date. This is something I added on there, because I've heard some concern from people in town that Monday night is hard for people to get to. And so there was some question as to whether we could change our date to, like, a Thursday night or something instead. What we, what we had voted for, let me just.
February, right?
We talked about that one.
February fifth was the date that we have set right now.
Wasn't that, like, everything was already taken up that week, and rain dates and snow dates?
Not everything. I think that the town meeting's on, the town meeting's on the fourth, which is, or the.
I know Nottingham's that same week.
Trying to remember what date it was.
See, it's on the weekend. I think it's Saturday morning. I think it's on the third, or it could be Sunday morning, the fourth, but I think it's the third, is when the town's doing it.
Okay. Were you trying to think of when the other schools are doing it?
Oh, so you can be there.
Right.
Right, right. But I think it needs to be between the fourth and, or the third and the tenth, I think, those are the dates.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't understand why the state tells us.
Well, everything that, with them, is so many days, and everything has to be done, so.
And I will not be there. I'll be in Missouri for training.
For the whole week?
For the week before that and the week after. I'll be back.
So you get no vote, you get no vote on this?
No, boo.
Just kidding.
Thursday's always worked better for me.
That's, that's what I thought, too. It's, it's like Thursdays is when our school board meetings are. Thursdays are later in the week when, I think, parents will be able to get there easier, you know, rather than a Monday night.
And we, I remember, we had this discussion two or three meetings ago, and I remember we said Thursday, and said, no, we can't do Thursday, so and so hasn't.
I should have brought my schedule. I can't remember.
Well, we still have time. Why don't we?
And the only other, the only other option is you can just set it, and we'll divide and conquer if we need to.
We've actually already been getting phone calls at the SAU, too. Like, the library called, because they're trying to schedule stuff for that day, too, so we've already actually given that date out.
The sixth?
The fifth.
Yeah.
The sixth. The Monday?
Yes.
Monday's the fifth, isn't it?
Fifth. Monday's the fifth.
Oh, yeah, that's three days instead of two.
Wait, the library's calling, the fifth, what?
I guess they have, like, a Friends of the Library Club.
Oh, they want them to sell stuff or something.
Yes, correct, yeah. Because I got all nervous, and I'm like, why, why, why are we getting questions about posting, because it's not posted yet? Because it's, it's not until February, so, and I knew, I didn't realize that the reconsideration was coming up, so. Is it Tuesday and Friday?
I thought it was Tuesday and Friday, but I'm not sure.
Tuesday, because what, your other?
I think so.
Nottingham.
I think so.
Tuesday for their deliberative, and Friday, I think, for the snow date.
I think that's it. I think that's it.
And Stratford isn't on the same schedule?
No, Stratford's annual meeting.
So much case Thursday, we'll be. I mean, I don't think it's a big deal to call the library back and say we're moving to the eighth, so.
No, yeah, it's far enough away.
Right.
No, they've already started their baking.
So, I mean, I would prefer to have it on a Thursday, like, like you. I mean, we do all our stuff on Thursdays anyway. I think it's kind of, I think it'd be easier for people to get to on a Thursday than on a Monday night, beginning of the week. And we can maybe set a snow date for Saturday, if we need to. And, and if our snow date comes in, and we have to divide and conquer on a snow day, so, I mean, that's just, that's life, right?
We'll get to whatever we can get to.
Right. So, I mean, I'd like to throw out there, I guess, I'd like to, see what you guys think about making our date be February eighth. Whatever time it was, six, six, six-thirty, six? Oh, we're too late. Oh, we, we were going to do it at six, I think.
Yeah, six.
I think you said six o'clock.
Yeah, six o'clock, and then a snow date being either Saturday or, or Friday.
It's on the agenda at six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Oh, it is, thank you.
My Hall's cough drop says go for it.
Our, you know what? Right now, our snow date says February eighth, so that date must be available for you.
I, I, that, I think we're Tuesday, Friday.
Right. All right, what do you guys, I mean, this is just what I want to do, and what you guys thought of this.
I will be there, so.
Yeah, but you.
So Thursday's fine, Thursday's fine, and then snow day on Saturday. I'll be back Saturday, so if it snows, I'll be there.
So much case, we've scheduled this Saturday at nine AM, on the tenth.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to that effect, I guess, that we moved, that we changed our deliberative date to February eighth at six o'clock. Yeah, so it wouldn't be the fifth, and our snow date for February tenth, which is maybe just barely under the line for.
What time on the tenth? I'm sorry.
Nine AM.
Nine AM on the tenth.
I thought you said.
You think six o'clock is, yeah, because we don't want to be there forever.
Well, it's, you know, it's going to be harder for people to get there coming from work at six o'clock. However, if we start at six-thirty, then it may go on until.
Yeah.
Ten-thirty, eleven, and then people will be able to stay, so, I don't know. I'm not sure how to balance that. I think.
Ten-thirty, eleven, yeah, of course.
It's happened before. All right, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guys, we'll move it to the eighth.
All right.
Any committee reports? I know the, the tech committee did meet. I wasn't there. Ms. Young, was there anything interesting at the tech committee meeting?
I'm sure there was.
Good answer.
My ability to access it at this present moment, I can look back at the notes.
Yeah, no, don't worry, don't worry about it. I just, if anyone has any questions, we, we can get to you in a minute, I think, if someone comes down to. No bus committee after New Year's?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's what we said at the last meeting, after the holidays.
No facilities, clubs, athletics, all good, okay. Parking lot items? We have a tractor on our parking lot.
Literally, on the front?
We do.
Quote, no. Oh, that was in the CIP.
So that's in CIP for next year?
I don't remember.
Or what we did, what we did with the tractor, either.
There were things on there that I didn't even know we had put in there.
Still, these committee took care of, was in charge of that, pretty much. Yeah, the tractor, we talked about. I don't know why I see, it says CIP. All right. We'll figure it out. Okay. Mr. Rooney, I think, is still on tractor competency presentation in January. Can't mind him, maybe if he needs to.
He told us that last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I think he's all set with that. Swoop on newsletter. Ms. Young, would you ping me before you're going to send out your Laker, and I'll see if I can write up something for the newsletter to be included in the Laker? What's that?
What is a ping?
A ping?
Like, send me an email.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, it's every Friday.
Slang.
Slang.
You can set a reminder on your phone.
Every, so one, one would. When would you need, when would you need it from me by?
Friday. I mean, I literally just copy and paste whatever people send me, so.
I'm on Friday.
Yeah, I generally.
Consider yourself pinged.
A weekly ping.
So if I ping you, the picture that I took, will you put it in?
Depending on how I look, sure.
I should send you the second one.
Of course, I will.
So ping just means email. It's not like a Twitter or anything, because I don't tweet.
I don't know what his definition of ping is. I will say, I'm not sending one out tomorrow, so the next one will go out when we get back.
You just said every Friday.
Every Friday, except tomorrow.
And next week.
But if I send it to you right now, will you remember to put it in? Because I'll forget by then. Okay, good.
All right. On our school board calendar is budget preparation, but I think our budget has been repaired.
Good check.
We, I should probably talk about, at some point, whether we need any additional materials for the deliberative session, or what we'd have, like to have in there. I know.
I know last year, you did a really nice job.
How much?
Doing the, the, the presentation thing there, the slideshow.
Yeah, so, right, I'll have to make, I'll, right, I guess that's how I'm going to make some of that slideshow. The other thing is the town report is going to be going out soon, is the audit.
I was going to mention that to you, but, so I didn't know if there was a letter that you wanted to submit, because sometimes the school board does send a letter.
I think it'd be great. I have no idea what to write for it. If you guys have any ideas, I'd be happy to listen to them. Maybe I can, I suspect if, if I put together a letter by our next meeting on the fourth, that, that will be under, within the due date for the town report. I could talk to.
Oh, explain the budget. You know, a budget statement.
Send me some text. I'd be happy to. I'll try to put together something for.
Point out what the highlights are and what we did, and.
I'll try to put together something for our next meeting on the fourth.
How two people never did anything?
If you would like to submit some texts for me, that'd be, that'd be great. I'll include anything appropriate.
I was only partially listening to you.
I'm intentionally not listening to you.
Do you want me to see if I can find past reports?